Good morning. It is eight thirty, January eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Time for our meeting to come to order. So would you please stand for the pledge and for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fathers, we gather together as the Finy County Commission. We ask that you be with us today for the decisions we make for the taxpayers of our community. We also ask your blessing on the state legislators as they start their sessions for the benefit of the citizens of Kansas. Grant us a little less wind, Lord, a little more rain, and be with all those in this room. Protect us and guide us in your name. Amen.
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 I like the wind mentioned. I did that for you.
Well, good morning, everyone. The, uh, day starts early. We'll hope to have a productive meeting today. And so for the last time in my career, I'm saying this meeting will come to order because today we reorganized and I get to get moved somewhere. I don't know where. They have to decide where they're going to park me. But anyway, I've enjoyed the, uh, opportunity to serve as chairperson. I enjoy the fellowship of this community. And so with that said, I'm going to stop here and ask for a motion for a consent agenda.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is adopted. Now we need to approve our regular agenda, and I don't think we need any changes, so I'd accept a motion.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion to second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our agenda is approved. It is now public comment time. This is an opportunity if, if anyone seated in our, um, audience would like to address anything that's not on the agenda, is this is your opportunity. Anyone for public comment? All here for business? Good for you. All right.
That's free coffee.
There we go. We have, uh, we, we, we have a, an opportunity to hear the, the head man from Neighborhood Development today. So Trent, come forward, please.
You said head man. I was expecting someone else. Well, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, before, for, uh, today for your consideration, we have the final plat. This is Country Acres Edition, final plat, um, located East Mary and, well, approximately East Marion North Farmland Road. This property consists of thirty-four single-family homes, ranging from lot size from one point oh to one point oh seven acres. This total subdivision is, uh, minimum, uh, well, our regulations, a minimum of five acres and forty acres. However, the size of two acres shall be permitted and, uh, with installation of aerobic treatment unit, septic system. And that's Article Three of Finy County Subdivision Regulations. The developers have requested to connect to city water. The request was approved by the governing body December seventh, twenty twenty-one. The developer would be responsible for the cost of that water line extension. The developer has submitted water line plans. A full set of infrastructure plans will be required to be submitted and approved before construction may begin. If, uh, excuse me, the developers will also need to sign a pre-annexation agreement with the city and record their restrictive covenants before any building permits are issued. Attached is the final draft of the development agreement. The third submittal, the final plat, was presented for review on December tenth, twenty twenty-one, and no major concerns were declared. Alternatives for this, alternative number one, the governing body may approve the plat and the developer agreement. Alternative number two, the governing body may approve the plat and the development agreement with changes. And alternate number three, the governing body may not approve the plat and the development agreement. Staff recommends alternative one. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay, and I see Ken just walked in. So if you have any questions of, of the draftsman, he's here. So Commissioners, questions, comments, anything that needs to be cleared up? Not I would.
I just have a quick question. Have you guys, is this the original design you came up with, presented it here a few months ago? Or did you tweak it any or it's basically the same?
Ken's shaking his head no.
It's changed several times from when we cranked up.
We're, we're at one acre now. We're at city water now. And, uh, so that took away, uh, the problem of, uh, the two-acre limitation by going with the city water. So it'll be a septic system, one-acre lots, city water. And, uh, that's about all.
We know who you are, but for the record, would you state your name for those out in TV land so that?
Jerry Spikes.
And you're the developer.
Well, yeah, that, my brother.
I follow Spikes.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, on the septic system, I think, uh, KDHE is in compliance. They're all in agreement with that limited due to the anaerobic.
Yes, they will be the aerated septic systems and, uh, spacing from the public water, uh, will be according to regulations.
And I guess one final deal in terms of, since it is city water, is there a backflow prevention requirement, uh, per individual lot that will be included in that?
Yeah, I think, I think that's just, uh, I, I'm, I don't know a lot about it, but I know it'll have to be approved by the city. So I'm sure that they'll be protecting that.
I think that's the, the key element that I would see. So thank you. Appreciate the answer.
Okay.
Appreciate it, guys. Consider a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve plat, uh, FC two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-eight.
As a final plat, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Go, go start building.
We'll get started right away.
Okay.
Uh, I do believe on the development, developers' agreement that Ken has a few questions on that.
Yeah, and I, I, Ken, Ken and I have been working together. I was, uh, under the weather last week, so I didn't get all of those tweaks made to the changes. So if we can hold off on that development agreement, but we're pretty close to having that wrapped up.
Ken, do you have anything needs to be addressed at this point?
No, I think we have limited.
All right. Trent, yours.
Okay. Well, so that one, thank you. I appreciate that. Moving on to our second part, Planning Commission Board of Appointments. So as you remember, uh, this item was tabled. Um, we do have an expired position. The new position is a three-year term. It does start January first, twenty twenty-two, and will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We have Vicky Gurman, who has expressed interest to serve. She has served her second term and would need a waiver in order to serve her, uh, a new term or another term. And we have attached to your packet the application for Steve Michael. Alternatives are to approve, uh, the waiver and reappoint Vicky Gurman. Number two, the governing body may appoint Steve Michael to the Planning Commission. And alternate number three, the governing body may leave a vacancy or vacancies to solicit interest in serving on the Planning Commission. Staff recommendation is alternate number one or two.
This was tabled, so we need a motion to untable it.
So move.
And, uh, all those in favor of untabling that, uh, item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, uh, we, we kind of have two or three things here intertwined. And, and we're probably premature, but I'm going to ask Lana, since you're sitting by somebody that's kind of a popular person for all kinds of appointments, would you, uh, would you mind coming forward? I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
In considering the what-ifs with our new county commissioner, departing your, your board and needing to be replaced, but, but wanting to serve in that through your annual meeting, would we be, um, in the air to make a conditional appointment today for something that's going to happen down the road?
Uh, to, to our board?
To your board, and so we can get all of the boards filled up here.
Well, uh, we don't current, that, that seat isn't currently open, obviously.
We're going to fire him from there.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I think you could make a contingent, um, action. You could, you could do that. We would have to come back after that seat opens, I, I think, and verify that. Um, just to make sure that it's all clean, but I don't think there would be an issue with you doing that.
I think we all kind of know the leaning of the, of the County Commission here, it seemed like from our last meeting so long.
Well, Mr. Chairman, and I, I don't have any questions. I mean, if you want to.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I took it upon myself to visit with Vicky after our last meeting. And, and I expressed to her, and, and I, I expressed to her that I'm just one of five. I'm not, uh, speaking for the whole commission. But that I, I am, uh, con, well, concerned isn't the right word, but I think about, you know, one person serving on multiple boards versus other people, other talents in the community that we might have. And we appointed, uh, Michael, uh, to the, uh, Steve Michael, to the, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals last meeting. And that doesn't mean we can't appoint him to the Planning Commission. But I, uh, visited with Vicky about Planning Commission, Economic Development. She's on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I truly appreciate her talent, uh, her involvement in the community activities and so forth. But it would be difficult for me to appoint her to the Planning Commission today and then have her come back and, and ask to be on Economic Development Board at a later time. So, uh, my leaning is, uh, if we choose Vicky, uh, for today for the Planning Commission, uh, that we need to look for someone else for the Economic Development Board, uh, when that position comes over, open after annual meeting, I assume. Uh, but, uh, I'm certainly not opposed to Vicky being on either board. I'm just concerned about having her serve on both boards and zoning appeals, just because we have other talents in the community. Nothing, nothing, uh, negative toward Vicky at all. And I told her I was going to make these comments this morning, and if she had additional comments or questions or disagreed with me, certainly she could come to the microphone.
And I will make a point that Thursday, the Planning Commission meets, and they've got a long agenda. So, uh, Vicky, do you want to address the group?
Good morning. Vicky Gurman. I love serving, um, the community. I serve on multiple boards. Um, I've been president of the Board of Realtors twice. Um, I serve my church on three, um, different boards or commissions. So it's, it's something that I love doing, and I don't feel that I'm overwhelmed by it. I certainly understand, uh, your desire of wanting to spread that around, um, when we have more people who are interested. And I would just let you know that I feel that I could, um, yet take on another position and continue to serve in this capacity, and I could do it, um, without prejudice, I guess. Um, so I will defer to your decision, uh, your opinions today, and certainly, um, would appreciate any opportunity to serve the community.
Appreciate your willingness.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I look at the combination of the opportunities, if you will, and Planning Commission and zoning appeals seem to be somewhat tied together. And I would think that there would be better service if there were not the same person serving on those two boards, kind of looking over your own shoulder. I have a hard time with that. So I think if you were going to pick and choose, I would think the service on the economic development.
I understand, Bob, a, a point to make, though, about the, the structure. The Board of Zoning Appeals states that one of those members has to be on the Planning Commission.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification.
One of, and now it's five on the Board of Zoning Appeals, but one, one must be.
And there's currently one serving in that role?
Well, Vicky, but also, um, all, yeah, all, Leonard is.
Right now, there's two serving on both?
I forgot about Leonard, but yeah.
Correct.
So.
So I think my point stands.
Yeah, it would, yeah, based on, yeah.
I'm seeking, where do you want to go? We've tabled, and it's time to make a decision, at least, in my opinion, on the Planning Commission, so they can meet Thursday with the board.
I move that we, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Mr. Michael to the Planning Commission.
State that again now, so.
I move that we appoint or approve the appointment, however, with the recommendation or the two people that were offered. Uh, Steve Michael, I think, was the other alternative, and I would move that we appoint him to that position on the Planning Commission.
I, I would just clarify, um, Michael is also on the BZA, so it's the same. He's also on the Board of Zoning Appeals as well, so.
We appointed him to the Board of Zoning Appeals last time.
Well, so we have two now. We would have two later. So have we changed anything? Just looking for clarification.
No, I was simply, with your previous statement, it falls under the same.
Okay, but you've offered us two names.
Yeah, yeah.
And either one that we appoint will end up with the same situation.
Correct.
And I think the talent that I have seen on this other opportunity, after I get fired next week, I'd like to see that talent utilized on the other side.
That's not a promise, but it's, uh, you can kind of look that. Okay. So I hear a motion to appoint Steve Michael. And who el, who else do we have here?
Did you get your second?
Well, we don't have a second yet.
I'll second.
Okay, but who else, who, we got to get the names out here. Just, just the one, just.
One of those two.
All right, I thought we had two. I'm sorry.
Steve and Vicky.
And so I'm, I apologize for being confused. All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? If none, all those in favor of appointing Steve Michael to the Planning Commission as a county representative, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that's done. So.
Technically, Leonard's the appointment.
I'm sorry?
Technically correct. Now Leonard is the appointment from the county.
Well.
For both. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. We have, thanks. Anything else, Trent?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, next up on the agenda is Lana, and we're going to, we had you up a little early, but that's okay. Come back and visit with us.
Good morning. Phil, first of all, would like to apologize. He is vice chairman and intended to be here this morning, but he tested positive for COVID. So he's, he's busy. Um, but I did send over a memo from, uh, Phil. And Stuart Nelson, if you guys remember, you appointed him to fill, um, the unexpired term of Tom Walker last year. That term expired at the end of the year, so he would need to be reappointed for a full three-year term now. And Sam Hands, um, his term also expired at the end of December, so he is up for, uh, another three years. Both of those gentlemen have indicated they would like to remain on the board. There are no term limits. There are no term limits in the bylaws for FCEDC and never happened for board members. So they are fully authorized to, to serve again on your behalf, should you choose to do that. So your options would be to appoint those gentlemen, reappoint those gentlemen to, to continue and serve another three-year term, or you could advise us that you want us to, to go out for other interested parties, or you yourself could advertise for interested parties if you so choose.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we reappoint Sam Hands and Stuart Nelson to three-year terms on the Economic Development Board.
Motion and a second is, do we have two there, though, to? We're going to do them one at a time? Okay.
I did them both, did them both.
Did them both together.
Yeah, that's not a problem to do them together. Their terms are both three years.
Okay. All right, any discussion?
They all show up to the meeting.
They, the FCEDC board is amazing. It is a very easy board to work with, and they're all very committed to their work. Not only do they show up to the meetings, they're very good about calling, texting, emailing between meetings and coming into the office to make sure that they are well apprised of what's happening in the community.
All right, we need a motion, we need a vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we got that covered.
Thank you.
We still have, in the future.
I think at our next meeting, then that would be filling the seat that I will vacate next week.
Okay. Wonder if anybody in the audience will be here to see if. Vicky, we appreciate your attendance. Okay, Fairgrounds tractor bid, Rex. Rex has some capable help with him today. Tell us about your tractor bids.
Well, we sent out bid letters to about 12 companies in the southwest area. Initially, we didn't have the front loader capabilities put on those bids, so we did have to send an addendum. Only one of those companies received the addendum before the deadline, so we did send a new letter to the companies that sent us initial bids, giving them extended time to get the front loader capabilities put on there. We got four bids back, two from American Implement. Both of them are John Deere tractors, one from Canamac, and it's a Coyote PX series. And then one from Central Plains Equipment, it's a KSIH Farmall tractor. So we're looking to replace one of the tractors down at the Fairgrounds. We are having increased part prob, trying to get parts in and maintain, be able to maintain these tractors. They have outlived their life cycles down there. They're breaking down in the middle of barrel races and rodeos. So we're trying to be able to, I guess, provide for our events a little bit better by getting a new tractor down there. So there's four, four options, or five, I guess. So you could choose the John Deere 6120 cab tractor, the John Deere 31 cab tractor, the Coyote PX series, the KSIH Farmall, or we could send out for rebids if you guys so choose to do so.
I happened to be present in your opening bids, and there was a, a bit of discussion about, okay, did, did one of the tractors meet the specs and so on? Do all of them meet your specs?
We had one, the KSIH Farmall did meet the specs, every spec that we had. However, it is the highest bid by quite a bit. Our recommendation is the Coyote PX. It was second in meeting all of the specifications that we sent out, and it happened to have the lowest bid.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
My question is simply this. I see on the fiscal note that this would be purchased out of Fairgrounds Reserve, but I don't see how much is in that reserve account and how much would be remaining after $68,000 is taken out.
We transferred a year-end approximately $92,000 in that.
And that's, I mean, that, that's it? There wasn't anything, any balance in it before the transfer? Okay, okay, so it'd be about 30, well, not quite 30,000 left.
Entertained a motion.
Question for my farm expert over here. What's resale on these things?
Well, that's, that was one of my questions. Is there any trade-in, any resale on your existing tractor?
I think we would probably repurpose them to mowers, the Montana. It's not, it's not powerful enough to do what we need with it. It would probably pull a mower. My problem with it is we've went through four clutches in, in approximately eight years.
No, I'm talking about the one you're, you're talking about buying, yeah.
I, that's a new one for me. You know, I'm all into tractors, but I looked at the warranty on that, and the warranty is good. However, the six-year warranty has expired. That you had to buy that before December 31st, if I'm not mistaken. So did that get extended because of this, or are you still stuck with the traditional warranty?
I would believe it was extended by the company that we were going to go through, so.
I am not familiar with a Coyote tractor. And is that Canamac? It is Canamac, so that's an established.
I did talk with Ken Magic to the extent of, he was, he really likes it. He, he bought one for himself, and he liked it so much, he bought the dealership.
Like a commercial from years back.
I, I started it, moved it a little bit. It seems like it's big enough and powerful enough to do everything we need.
I'm not worried about the power. I'm considering, you know, the unproven tractor. Tractor have a cab on it, air conditioning, heater. So all you, all you need.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm not mistaken, one of the people in my coffee group owns a tractor. I don't know if it's the same model, but is very pleased with that brand, so.
We got the recommendation from the city.
Okay, thank you. But you're going to keep the old tractor for a mower tractor?
Yeah, I think so.
And this has hydraulic lift with just a flat plate that'll fit any bucket that you have and so on? All right. Okay. They did a pretty thorough job of looking things over. Need a motion and a second, guys?
Go ahead, Dwayne, you're the tractor expert.
Oh, I'm a little outsy on this one, but I will follow the recommendation of Rex and staff and Fairgrounds and move that we approve the purchase of the Coyote tractor for $68,159.50. Second.
Go ahead and give that to Bob.
Any discussion? They have that tractor in stock?
It can be here in April.
April, okay. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go buy a tractor. You do realize that the John Deere salesmen's are going to be all over me now.
Yeah, they go say they can't get them.
Thanks, folks. Kelly, you back there already for an update? Before you start, I have a question for you. You sent out an email to us about check protection, I'm going to use that term, this, the empirical.
Experian.
Experian, I'm sorry. Have, have you tried to enroll anybody?
I'm actually enrolled in it. I have been enrolled for a couple of years, and my kids are both enrolled as well.
Got me kind of concerned as I was trying to enroll in that, and so I backed out and quit. And I wanted to see if you'd had any bad experiences with it.
Not at all, no. And in fact, I bought a car last year, but that was the only time. So you'll get a notification if your social's been pulled. Otherwise, you'll get a monthly report that there hasn't been any activity with your social. So I, I do know that it works. I did get a notification during that process and asked if it was me. So that was nice to have, and it's a free benefit. So we are seeing the unemployment claims climb again, which you file those by social security, excuse me, social security number, so there's some identity theft on the rise again. So that was the reason I sent it out, just for a reminder to the staff that we do have that free benefit. We do have a paid benefit as well, but that one is, is free.
Well, I have three of those opportunities because Kroger lets some of the records get exposed, so they're offering free service, and so is Walgreens. I mean, but it makes you wonder how many of those are scams out there looking for an opportunity to get records.
Yeah, I don't think this one is. It is linked with our Blue Cross membership, so Blue Cross has partnered with them.
Okay, I appreciate your, your input, and I'll go back and look at it again.
Okay, if you need any help, holler. So this morning, we've been through two full months with GrowWell, and I just wanted to provide an update on the utilization with the county staff and their dependents that are on the insurance. So just for, to go back for a little bit of history, on September 20th, the board approved for our membership with GrowWell to begin November 1st. So we have two full months of data here. November 3rd and 4th, we did do onsite flu clinics. We did have a pretty low response, but I talked to the health department, and they thought that was due to, it was a little late in the season for flu, and they had already done a lot of flu vaccines up there on our staff. So I anticipate that being a little better for next year. November 9th through the 11th, we did do onsite health risk assessments and biometrics. We had approximately 90 employees show up onsite, and then I believe about another 12 went to the clinic and had that done over there. The beginning of December, I worked with GIS to create a survey to send out to employees on what they thought about GrowWell, their experiences. I wanted to hear the good and the bad. And I, that, that was something I had sat down with GrowWell, and they wanted to know as well. So I sent out about 320 emails to county staff. I received back 22 of those surveys. I had one bad review and 21 positive reviews out of the survey that I sent out. I did, in that meeting with GrowWell, talk about, we want to send an informational brochure to the home address on file to make sure that the information is getting to the dependents as well, not just through email here. So that's something I'm working on. Any questions about the utilization report that you have?
Kelly, how does that correspond to what the health department had per month? Are they doing better, getting?
I do believe it's better. I had no, I had nothing in writing for sure to confirm what was happening up at the health department. All I can go by is what I was told, and that was about 30 employees were using that. So as you can see here, we've got the 48 new patients and 59 of the, 59 patients established with them, which is one or more visits. So on here, the physicals and the HR, they are zero. We will, we did start our pre-employments with GrowWell beginning January 1. So as we move through the year, we will start to see some numbers in there as our pre-employments go over to GrowWell. And then for 2022, we do not have the mental health piece with GrowWell. The county had a three-year contract with Health Advocate, so our mental wellness is still being utilized through Health Advocate, and that is why we won't see any mental wellness numbers on this report for the 22-year. Okay?
Anything? Need to discuss?
Chairman, just a comment. If I'm not mistaken, and I was checking my calendar to make sure, tomorrow morning is the chamber breakfast, and GrowWell is the keynote speaker, or presentation, I should say, at the chamber breakfast tomorrow.
Well, our health department's just been inundated with COVID, so they, they need a little relief if GrowWell can grant that to them, so.
Yep, yes.
Your next topic?
Yes, so I don't know that this has been done in the past with the commission. And this year, we'll get on this a little bit quicker than after the fact, but I did list out here the 2022 holidays to be approved that the county will observe. And then I also listed the days that those holidays would be observed. The only two that would not be observed on the holiday itself would be Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Per policy, if a holiday falls on a Saturday, we have the Friday before off. If it falls on a Sunday, we're off the Monday following. So the Christmas this year, we would be off, and the building would be closed Friday through Monday. So I'm just looking for approval of the 2022 holidays.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second. Discussion?
Well, just one comment. I noticed on the list of holidays, we've got third Monday in February for Martin Luther King. I think they should say.
Oh, yes, that is, yeah, that was a typo.
So that we put it in the record correctly.
Yep.
Yeah, that'll be corrected?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Robert, Rural Opportunity Zones.
This is a resolution you passed last year. Once again, it's for the participation in rural opportunity zone. That's administered by the Department of Commerce, help to attract those from outside of the area, workers outside the area, up to $15,000. It is, it was not utilized la, last year.
We'd hoped to utilize it, and it didn't work out. Is that fair?
I think that's correct.
Yeah, okay. So we need a motion to approve again for the.
You would adopt resolution, huh?
So entertain a motion.
The resolution number is?
Seven, 22.
2022.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Need discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we now have that in place again. Let me look here. I guess we're ready for the county administrator's report.
All right, both Linda and I are working on various developments, residential and commercial developments, looking at agreements and so forth. Linda has the SMH agreement in front of her. That's for county engineer services. Getting the process of developing the work papers for the 2023 budget, as well as, I believe later on this month, we do have a meeting with the auditors. And I think Commissioner Pishney is involved in that meeting. And I do not recall the date.
I believe it's tomorrow.
Yeah, Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday, this week.
So it's tomorrow. Yeah, I've got it on tomorrow at 10:30. Is that still correct?
Correct, correct. And then working with Trudy on, on her staffing, shortfalls out of the health department. I just, I think I made you aware, aware last week that we have quite a few vacancies in the health department, so working on strategies to try and figure that out.
You'd think we'd run out of people some of these days when we have as many positives as going through, but it's got to turn around some of these days.
Going on two years, yeah.
Okay, anything else, Robert?
That is it.
Thank you. As Robert said, still working on some development agreements and going to those planning meetings and getting on top of that. Doing some side projects for some departments here. I think one of the other things that's, that should be upcoming for all of you is voting on a replacement for the indigent services contract. That should be on the next meeting. I was hoping to get it this week, but there was some additional discussion that needed to be had about replacing Mr. Wright on that contract. And still waiting for the court to make an order on the other issues, so I think that's all.
Okay. All righty. Board reports.
Okay, first report, let's see. I attended the Southwest Kansas Builders? Builders Association Breakfast. It was interesting. It was a good group and active, and so I think we've got a lot of folks that are interested in, in construction around here. Also, I was on the KLPG conference call Friday. It's interesting, the state has got excess money for change. And they want to put 450 million to food, to do away with food tax, $500 million. $500 million to give it back to you and I at $250 a clip, which looks to me like it's going to cost more than what we're going to benefit, but that's beside the point. For free college, or frees college tuition, 600 million, they want to put in a rainy day fund, which will probably be on the bottom of the list of things to get funded. 450 million dollars on a caper buyback, which would probably be a good idea. They've got lots of ideas up there, so it'll be interesting to see where they spend it all. And plan on attending KLPG on the 25th, I think, and it's Thursday, Tuesday.
25th, yeah.
Tuesday, yep. Also, that conflicts with my library meeting, so if somebody wants to go to the library meeting here on the 25th, I would cheer to let them go.
On the 25th of this month?
Yep.
At 5 o'clock?
Yep. So Pam would be greatly appreciated if you'd show up. Other than that, that's what I've been doing.
Well, I was off and gone, so I apologize. I don't have a report. Other than, I do want to commend Public Works. They did a tremendous job, Sewer District Number 2. Christmas Eve, late in the afternoon, had a problem with a lift station, and we called through dispatch and they responded within an hour and did a great job getting people back online. So kudos to them, and we really appreciate what they did. I am going to attend Monday night, the Southwest Kansas Night Out in Topeka. Thank you, Bob. That's all.
Only county business I attended to was the Fair Board Wednesday night, and again, very active group of folks. They're working on the entertainment part of it, and they've got some pretty neat ideas. Might have a little figure eight car race on this one. Might be kind of exciting. So possibility of that, not, nothing in iron, but it was interesting discussion, and that was pretty much it.
All right.
Well, other than visits with people like Vicky and a couple of other constituents out in the county, I didn't have any particular meetings. I did attend the breakfast for the Builders Association with Larry. Well, that's right, yeah, Rob, and Robert was there. That's correct, yes. Mine, mine are coming up next week, Southwest Kansas Chambers Night Out that Bob's referenced, KLPG. I'll be there on that Tuesday. But also on Wednesday is the KAC and the League of Municipalities Government Day in Topeka, and I'll attend that as well. And then in February, I'll be back in Topeka for KAC's Day in the Capitol and a couple of other things. So some legislative things coming up that I hope to be involved in. Little bit, yep, little bit.
The only meeting I've had, and I think we may have a bit of more discussion about it a bit later, was over the print media. I had a conversation with, with a publisher from the Ulysses Paper. I'm glad to see that we have a representative from the Telegram here today, and we'll come up with, with a discussion in a little bit as we reorganize for an official paper. But I, I have to tell you, I have hopes that the new management and new style will improve. It certainly, I think even our reporter would agree, it's been pretty pathetic, and that's being kind of honest about it. I don't mean to offend anybody, but I have an example. My ex-wife's obituary was published on the, in the Friday paper, the Friday right after Thanksgiving. And my daughter from Minneapolis called and asked, Dad, can you go get a paper for me and one for my, for my son? I want somebody to tell me where you go in this town to find a newspaper. Because I went to every stand, I went to four grocery stores, I went to three motels, because I used to deliver them there. I finally found one at my barber shop, and then I started calling friends. And I did come up with, after about a two or three-day hunt, with the second paper, but, but in my search, I went to a couple of realty companies. We have Vicky here, and one of the realty companies said, you know, it's really important when they advertise somebody's property to cut out that ad and put it in the file to prove that they did in fact advertise it and it was accurate. And even the realty companies can't get a hold of a newspaper. So what kind of circulation is going on? Anyway, we will discuss that in a little bit. So upcoming meetings, I don't know whether our new chairperson, I'm going to be presumptuous that who that chairperson is based on, on tradition. But, but the planning commission meets Thursday. I haven't been told yet, but I've been relieved of going over and watching the planning commission. Are you going to leave those kind of the way they are, Lon?
Well, I haven't even discussed that.
That is included in our reorganization.
Yeah, yeah, but, but the report that planning commission also, the Fannie County Committee on Aging moved their meetings to Thursday, so I'll have two meetings on, on Thursday to attend. So that's it for, for commission report. And Larry, I'll cover the library for you, I think. Look at my schedule. I see next up is executive session. You want to do that first and then reorganize?
That sounds fine to me.
All right. Lon, tell me who we want where and for how long, and we'll.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we need to have an executive session for a discussion of non-elected personnel. And I would suggest that the, the discussion begin with our board members and Robert present. And then it ultimately may be just our board members for a little bit. And I think we start with 30 minutes, and if we need to reconvene, we can do that if we can, need to extend it.
So that would, in the form of a motion, would bring us back into this room at about 10 minutes before 10? So I would entertain a motion, or that was a motion?
That is a motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, away we go.
No action taken and we need to have another executive extension.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we reconvene at the executive session for up to fifteen minutes with our own committee of commissioners.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we'll be back here about ten after.
Not a motion. You suggested, yeah, you suggested, it wasn't a motion, it was a suggestion.
It is a motion.
Okay.
I don't, I didn't think you were listening.
I always listen to you, Lon.
All right, we're back from executive session and no action was taken. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, oh yeah, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we extend the contract with our county administrator through the year, calendar year of 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Congratulations on another year.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay. With that said, let me have a look here. It is reorganization time.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm here to tell you, we need to do some electing, selecting, whatever. So I would entertain a nomination for chairperson for the Fannie County Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Mr. Ishney as the chairman for 2023.
2022 or?
Or 2022, I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure you're around for a couple of years.
You've been going. A second. Motion, second. Any other, just any other nominations? If not, then all those in favor of Lawn being chairperson for 2022 say aye. Aye?
With one abstention.
Those opposed? Now we need a vice chair.
Not my turn. Not my turn.
But it is, it is Larry Jones.
Would be Larry's turn.
It is, it is actually Larry's turn.
I, I would move that Larry Jones be placed as vice chair for 2022, since he did that to me, so.
Second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Larry Jones as vice chair for 2022 say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We need to select financial institutions. What else do we need, Dory?
Um, so we've got on the, on the screen here, next is board appointments.
What I would ask, Mr. Chairman, is that we wait and approve those at the next meeting. Look at the list and we'll make sure we get Bob in a couple of spots. But if you have preferences, let me know between now and the next meeting, and then we'll make those official at the next meeting.
Noted.
Now, official depositories and the language goes something like every deposit, every banking institution that is licensed or is, is.
Licensed and insured.
Yeah, well, state your motion there, Duane.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint all banking institutions that are licensed and insured in Fannie County as our official depositories.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And finally, I see official newspaper. I've already brought that subject a bit, but, uh, Lawn?
Well, before I make a motion, I want to ask Robert or Linda, we've had some discussion and we know of some other counties that have had a secondary official publication for notices, especially when the print media is not printing each and every day. So we know of a county that, that they've used Garden City Telegram as their backup, or, or secondary is the way to put it. But our question is this, if we just name an official newspaper today, be it the Garden City Telegram, is there anything that precludes us from adding a secondary publication somewhere mid-year? And I'm not aware of any statute that would preclude us from doing that if we chose to do so.
No, there isn't. You can, you can name as many as you want as secondary, as long as you meet the primary responsibility of a paper of broadest circulation within the county.
Okay, okay. So with that being said, knowing we have that option for a secondary publication in the future, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Garden City Telegram be our official newspaper for 2022.
I'll second.
Have a second. Any discussion? We, uh, I'm going to state again, Megan, for her, for her publishing crew, I would, I would hope that at least we can fill a magazine, a Telegram rack somewhere with an extra newspaper. So you want to come and address that? I, when I called Megan, your phone number eventually got some female voice who would not identify herself, may have been you or somebody else, don't have any idea, said they would look for a newspaper and call me back within an hour. That was three, four weeks ago. I still have not heard anything back about finding a newspaper, so that, that sort of thing I would hope could be improved.
Um, I just talked to Brad on the phone a little while ago.
You have, on your.
Sorry. I was talking to Brad a little while ago and we're, our official transition away from Gannett wasn't until the first of this month. So we're still dealing, dealing with transition. Also, our person in circulation has been out with health, medical issues right now. So we're dealing with that as well, with kind of having them go to the main company of Cherry Road Media. I'm not, I'm not in the management position, so I don't know all the details of that myself.
I don't mean to put you on the spot here and embarrassing you. That's not our intent, but, but surely somebody needs to get the word that the, the quality of, of the publication has gone downhill. And I think you guys all recognize that, so.
I do know we are getting a new phone system that will have options to get to all of us via either computer or, or cell phones that will direct people that way. I'm not sure on the date. I haven't checked. I have to look at when the date, when that's going to be going into effect, but.
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Megan, a couple of quick questions for the record. First of all, what is the name of the new publisher? It's a young man.
Cherry Road Media.
No, no, the person, the.
The person, Jeremy Goldman.
Jeremy Goldman?
Goldman. Gold, B-A-N.
Oh, okay, okay. And then secondly, when I look at the Telegram website, it still lists Seventh Street as the address for the Telegram, which I know that's not it because that's where municipal court's going. So for the record again, what is the address for the Garden City Telegram?
Eighteen oh seven West Mary Street.
Eighteen oh seven West Mary Street. So, thank you. I think people need to know who the person is, its publisher, and, and also, or editor. What is his title, Jeremy?
He's the owner of Cherry Road Media.
Okay. Oh, he is the owner, but I think he goes by publisher as far as what his title is in the, in the.
You said it's West Mary Street is your, it's, so you're no longer next to Dick Construction's office and?
Is that not West Mary Street? I'm.
Well, that's where I went and found a locked door that said Telegram on the door.
So say that again. What's the number again?
Eighteen oh seven.
Eighteen oh seven NMB East Mary, I guess.
Okay. Louis.
Thank you for that.
As I said, apologize, don't mean to give you a bad time, but boy, something needs to happen. So I, I, I will make this observation before we vote. The city of Garden City had a reorganization meeting their last, their last meeting. And when they discussed an official paper, I got a clear inference that they're less than tickled with the, with the prospect too. It sounded like it was a one-year deal for them, so we will hope that this does some good.
Chairman, in fairness, we do have new ownership, so perhaps it will.
Yeah, yeah. And I, giving some credit, with the local news has improved since you've gone to the three days a week. So, you know, you need to be congratulated on that. So anyhow, we need to vote on an official paper and our nomination for that is the Garden City Telegram. So all those in favor say aye. Aye? Those opposed? All right. What else do we need to do here?
I think that's it.
You're in charge.
Well, I think we need to, we're, we're going to recess or, or conclude this meeting and then reconvene under Lawn's leadership back there for our work session. Is that correct?
Yes, we do have a work session, session.
Okay. So is there anything else to come before this body at this time as a Board of County Commissioners in a regular meeting?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd be remiss if we did not thank you for your, your leadership, and I know you've done it in the past as well. But for 2021, as was with Duane's year of 2020, they've been somewhat unusual years with things going on and, and with viruses and hirings and, and so forth. And so I appreciate it. And, uh, on behalf of the other commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your, your comments. So anything else?
Oh, I do. And you can keep the parking spot because I like the exercise walking, so you can.
You know, that's, that's why I enjoyed being chairperson, because I could pull right up here to the door and, and.
Get here early. There's lots of places.
Yeah, I hear you. Well, we'll take a short break and order to move everybody to the Carol Brown Conference Room and we'll turn it over to Lawn. So this meeting is adjourned.